All right, I will call to order this meeting of the City of Urbana's City Council Committee of the Whole. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu. Councilmember Wu. Colossity.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin.
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
All right, and now we're finally going to get to approving these minutes that we've tried to approve a couple of times. We have minutes from May 27, 2025, Committee of the Whole meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Shandra.
I'll second.
Seconded by Grace. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, how about you online? You OK with them?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so let's have a vote for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The minutes passed unanimously. Next up is additions to the agenda. I've been informed that item E3 will not occur tonight. It'll happen next week.
Yes.
Is that correct? And that City Attorney would like to provide a brief update that will substitute in there for that item. OK, everybody OK with those adjustments?
Could you clarify, are you replacing three?
Yeah, I figured we'd just put it, slot the attorney in for item three there.
In addition to legal division staffing, or can you cover it in that one? I am just confused if we're removing it or also adding something.
I can just stay at the desk and do them back to back.
OK. What's the topic again?
This is just an update on the OSF announcement of consolidation of their facilities and information we were able to gather this past week about process related to that.
OK.
So we're just removing three.
We're going to have that be number three. All right, any concerns? Can we consider that unanimous consent, those adjustments to the agenda? Then we'll move on to presentations and public input. Would anybody in the public like to address the Committee of the Whole? We do have some letters that we will read. In the meantime, while you're thinking about it, Grace, if you would start out.
I'm unable to, and you got the timer going, I think they're mostly short, but let me know if any of them go over. Unable to attend tonight's meeting, please read this into the public record during the meeting. Dear Mayor and City Council, I urge you to not vote in favor of the budget as proposed. I suggest one major change and several minor changes before you vote to approve the budget for FY 2026. Firstly, I strongly object to the inclusion of a grocery tax as a revenue stream. Sales taxes of any type are highly regressive and increase social and economic inequities between haves and have-nots. Grocery taxes magnify this injustice and magnify economic inequality. I am highly disappointed that you are considering a grocery tax just months after it was reported that a new grocery store was approved in an area that has been traditionally seen as a food desert. Please look for other forms of revenue. Second, please reconsider funding the addition of four new positions for Urbana Police. There were several positions that were approved for last year that have not been filled. Why are approving additional positions when there are unfilled positions from last year? We do not need more cops. We need a fully funded alternative response model that is separate from the Police Department. Please adjust your budget to match your stated priorities. Budgets are moral documents. Please ask yourselves if the budget you see before you tonight aligns with your values and the values of the residents of Urbana. Sincerely, Dawn Owen-Denem. He they.
All right, next up, dear, do you want to reset the clock? I think this one's going to get in time. Dear Urbana City Council, my name is Sana Sabuwalla. I'm a resident of Urbana and a member of Champaign-Urbana Muslim Action Committee. This time last year, I was regularly attending city council meetings to encourage the city to invest in an alternative response to policing task force. Now I'm writing to ask you to use that alternative response task force, see what it is capable of here, before investing more of our city's funds in policing. The alternative response task force should meet and make its recommendations before the city authorizes more spending on new officers. I believe that the funds that would be allocated to new officers would be better put to use via direct assistance. That money could go to a lot further to directly solving the problems that exist in Urbana. The township is doing research on alternative response models that is promising. Let the alternative response task force do its job before hiring more cops. Fill the vacancies that exist in the Police Department before allocating more money for more hires. Ultimately, the council agreed that an alternate response was necessary when you agreed to create the task force. Let's see what it can do before we hire more officers and leave alternatives underfunded. Thank you for your time, Sana Sabuwalla.
Dear Urbana City Council, please read my comment into the public record this evening. I am an Urbana resident and would like to add my voice to the many other voices asking you to not authorize the hiring of more police officers for the fiscal year 2026 budget. The alternative response task force still needs to make its recommendations, and the Urbana Police Department has not yet filled its currently vacant positions, including the social worker who was authorized but never hired. Furthermore, I do not support more money being spent on police in this town when our community members' needs are not currently being met. Our community members face housing and food insecurity, need support with finding employment and mental health services. As a library sciences graduate from UIUC and former worker and volunteer at both public libraries and CU, I spoke with community members who asked for more of these services. They did not ask for police. The police are not equipped to provide these services and should not be placed, should not be the place we seek them. To support our community, we need to be directing more funds to services that help us better care for each other and assist community members in crisis. A police response often escalates or exacerbates these issues rather than addressing them. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sam Eglar, Urbana resident, Ward 4.
All right, next, and I'm going to need the clock for this one. To Mayor DeShawn Williams and City Council members, first, I would like to say thank you for what you do. I'm sure it is not easy to be in the position and try to satisfy everyone's ideas and desires, which is virtually impossible. My name is Darlene Bailey, and again, I'll say that I'm just an ordinary citizen of Ward 3, working for a safe and healthy community. And I feel strongly that we could benefit greatly from having a community engagement officer working in our community. I strongly feel we need a community engagement officer to assist the community on a few things for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026, and to work on some preventative measures. I do not have any training in being a law enforcement officer, but I do know that at the moment, there is still a humanitarian side to law enforcement. I understand the police are to enforce the law and maintain safety and patrol assigned areas to detect criminal activity. I also see that some laws were updated in 2025, and I paid particular attention that police are to ensure citizens obey the law, and the word obey sort of threw me off a bit. Since most of our police force time is spent on noncriminal calls, it will be very important to have someone participate directly with community safety programs and preventative methods to alleviate hotspots of undesirable community burdens, because people are needed to help residents help themselves and develop the responsibilities of self-supporting community, which will need less police involvement. Can someone please direct me on the qualifications and procedures for the Urbana Citizen Review Board? I am not so much concerned with misconduct and punishment, as I would like to work on solutions to create and promote a much more morally, a more morally display of etiquette. I seek no benefits or rewards, but I can offer commitment and objectivity because I understand both citizen and law enforcement. But we do not want to be cruel with this on either side. I had the privilege of sitting down with a sergeant for a few minutes, which was a very productive few minutes. During the entire time, he had his eye on his phone constantly, checking it, and soon they, a person, finally came and completely called him out for assistance on a traffic stop, which I completely understood. So I have eyewitness knowledge to how these, how things operate in this particular area. To wrap this up, I would like to say we are going to need our law enforcement team without a doubt, and that's a fact. But citizens also need to be cared for, understood, and prepped for disaster. We need to work with the police to help create an environment where we can morally help take care of ourselves. Thank you for your time, Darlene Bailey.
Please read this message aloud into the record. Hello, my name is Barry Zhang. I am constituent from Champaign. I'm writing to oppose the current city budget that would allocate money for a grocery tax to more facilities for police. The police do not need, police do not keep the community safe and are often the ones terrorizing people in our neighborhoods, especially with the advent of ICE terrorism being rampant in the U.S. Please revise the budget to be for care, not cops. Sincerely, Barry Zhang.
All right. Good afternoon. Tonight, you will vote on the budget for next year. I understand that part of the budget includes spending for new police officers to be paid for by a grocery tax. As any good study of economics will tell you, families with less money spend disproportionately more on groceries. An income decreases, people spend more on necessities and less on, as income decreases, people spend more on necessities and less on luxuries. I can tell you from personal experience, I used to work at Schnucks, and ten or twenty cents made the difference between being able to eat lunch or not. We have seen everywhere the effects of extra police since the Black Lives Matter movement in 2020. We know that black communities across the country are overpoliced, and these budgets have exacerbated the issue. To force the poorest and the most marginalized people in our community to pay for the police that oppress them is naked class warfare. Indeed, we have seen the effects of the militarization of police in Los Angeles last week as police departments collaborate with immigration officials to separate families and target Latinos regardless of immigration status. This is where Urbana is headed with these policies. I strongly urge the city councillors to see the writing on the wall and protest the interests, protect the interests of their constituents, and vote against this budget. Thank you. I cede my time to the next speaker. Sincerely, Alan Romero. And then we have two more via email that came in too late to be printed. The first one comes from Dr. Evelyn Underwood. I feel that the positions for police in 2025 was enough. Trying to add more positions for 2026 is overkill because raising taxes on food when the economy is leading towards a recession because of tariffs and trade and because of cuts in the safety net is coming in the federal budget. Since the Trump administration cut $1 billion from the USDA program that supports meals on wheels, school lunch programs, small farmers reimbursement, and public food pantries reimbursement. The upcoming cuts in Medicaid and the SNAP program will push the elderly and the poor in dire straits. We should give the money to help the safety net for the most vulnerable in our, in society for survival. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood. And then the last one that I have is from Claire Johnson. My name is Claire Johnson. I live at 403 South Glover in Urbana. I'm writing to urge council members to vote against continuing the 1% grocery sales tax, which would be used to fund additional police positions. Removing this tax would ease the financial burden on residents who are already struggling to make ends meet as prices for necessities like groceries continue to rise. There are already several unfilled positions at the Police Department that were approved in previous budget. It seems fiscally irresponsible to approve four additional positions now, especially when the city is moving forward with an alternative response model that is likely to decrease the workload for existing officers. If anything, we should be discussing how to support direct service programs that may suffer from federal funding cuts, not increasing the police budget. Thank you. That is all we have for public comment. Anybody else wish to speak? Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Isabel Osorio. I've lived in Urbana since 2023. I'm originally from Illinois, central Illinois. I moved here from Southern Oregon where I was working as a wildfire defense landscaper. I was sent home to the Midwest because I had too much smoke exposure. So you can get a sense for who I am. I'm a respiratory care clinical support aide at Carl Hospital, which means that on any given day, I'm the person who's going to step in the room when a person is desaturating in oxygen, which means that they can't breathe. Their breathing is ineffective. So your family members and you, when you're vulnerable, I'm the person who comes to help, and I'm grateful for that because I come from a place where there is wildfire smoke that chokes people out. My mother happens to be dying of COPD. And in 2023, I will say just now for all people in the room, trigger warning, I'm going to mention sexual assault. If anyone would like to leave the room, this is the moment. In 2023, I was sexually assaulted by my boss at work at a local farm. And the only request that I made after that happened was that we would institute formal, and we would be accountable for, formal sexual harassment prevention training. Because what happened to me almost killed me. I still have flashbacks. I have to pause my workday at the hospital sometimes. And I believe that if we take a moment as a community and focus on instituting sexual harassment and sexual assault prevention training, we can protect members of the community who would go on to do things like work in the hospital, be first responders for people who are having crises, work at the grocery store and help distribute food, sit in your seats. I'm just here to raise awareness of this issue because if it hadn't been for the grace and kindness of a neighbor who spoke previously, Gwyneth, I probably wouldn't be alive. As I mentioned, I was assaulted by my boss, and that meant that I couldn't continue going to work safely. I lost my job. I lost my housing. And then I was trafficked for domestic labor in our community. And so I feel very grateful to the community of Urbana for the way that I've been lifted through that. But it is critically important to me to see our town prioritize protecting survivors beyond races. If any, if any of you know, if you call races, one of the, one of the support resources they can offer is therapy, but the waitlist is months long. And when a survivor has post-traumatic stress disorder, suicidality is, is, is very likely. The people that I've related most to in my adult life are combat veterans from the military because they understand what flashbacks feel like. They understand what hypervigilance feels like. They understand what sweating through your clothes feels like, being afraid of people you shouldn't be afraid of. I connected with Fire Chief Demondade a couple of months ago, and we had a beautiful conversation, and we were able to talk about what it feels like as a wildfire survivor, what it feels like to watch somebody burn, or to watch somebody suffer, or to see someone die from smoke inhalation. And I just want to bring to you that sexual assault is a lot like a disabling event, like a fire. It is a disabling event. And it takes people out of your community who could be doing jobs like mine, helping people breathe. So I have no sharp demand. I have no criticism for the council, just to bring this issue to your conscious awareness to be considering. I believe I'm just planting a seed with you to think about this, and I would like to engage with the community about this further. Because I have survived, I am surviving actively every day, and it's important to me that I wake up in the morning so that I can go to the hospital, and I can go to the oncology unit, and I can see my patients, and I can make sure that they can breathe and live, or breathe comfortably and die with dignity. And I wouldn't be able to do that. I wouldn't be able to do that if people hadn't taken care. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still Adam Nichols, and I still live in Urbana. Just wanted to say some things about my previous comments that are a little more actionable. I still do want to know why the, we're spending thirty-three and a half million dollars more than last year. And I know some is going to the fire station, a couple million. That doesn't, that's not thirty. That's a big difference. So what I'm looking for from the council when they're going over the budget is to not pass any progressive taxes, balance the budget so we're, you know, not spending more than we're bringing in. And if we do need to pass more taxes, that's fine. That's a discussion we can have. But make sure that they're progressive taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Hollenberg of South Cottage Grove at McHenry. Again, isn't fully thought out, but I'll try my best. Gwyneth Krebsio has been the one person tonight to speak up for the disabled people in our community. I am one of those disabled people, but you wouldn't know it just from looking at me. I'm not sure how many speakers we've had tonight, but one person in a hundred speaking up for disability is a perfect example of the amount of consideration given to the disabled in our nation. I came up here a second time to remind us, all of us in this room, that disability is all around us, both visible and invisible. It's not just people in wheelchairs or with canes or hearing aids and service dogs. Anyone with a chronic health condition is disabled. Their body is unable to function in the normal way, but you can't see that externally. This is a reminder to treat every person with dignity and respect because you don't know what's going on in their life. You don't know, you just don't know. So, for example, how many people in this room are wearing glasses, contacts? Show of hands. You have glasses? You're disabled. Just a friendly reminder, because you probably take that for granted, because you have this disability, but it's common enough that the accommodation for that is widely accessible. So I'm saying all this just as a reminder to treat people with kindness, ourselves included. But as it's been stated, like, the high percentage of people who encounter police who have various disabilities, whether physical or mental or societal, and we just need to be easing these burdens and providing services to meet the physical and, what is it, the like, object need, material needs of the people. That is how we prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Committee of the Whole?
Hello, my name is Gwyneth Krebsio again. I just wanted to come up and clarify. I appreciate people speaking their mind, but I want to clarify that what you're doing is you are, you're finding the needs in the community. You're taking our resources, and you're deciding what is the best way to allocate those, those resources for the people that, that have the right tools, the right skills, the expertise to address those issues. That may seem really basic, but I guess what I want to address is that, as a lot of people have been saying, there are a lot of nonviolent issues to respond to. And I'm wondering why we are sending in folks that have guns and the capacity to kill and, and are in many ways trained and encouraged to use force into these situations that need to be deescalated. I'm absolutely sure that they, and I would hope that they have a lot of deescalating training and are able to use those skills, but I, like, I deescalate in my job and in my life all the time. If I brought a weapon into those spaces, even if I was legally allowed to, that would not be serving the purpose of caring and supporting and deescalating situations. So again, I just want to ask and kind of reiterate what everyone here has been saying tonight, which is, you know, you have this decision. I really liked what someone else was saying about the budget being a moral document, and really carefully decide what you're doing with that funding to find the people that do have the right skills for these situations. Because we have an amazing amount of resources, an amazing amount of skill. There are so many people that are in need of, of jobs, and so many people that want to support our community. And if you can do the magic to find a way to put the money in the right places so that those people can do the work of supporting the community that they want to be doing, that they, that they really need to do, then, then you'll be living up to your job as a public servant. So I appreciate you doing, doing that work, and I hope that that will be the reflection of the community that has continually come and spoken to you with a lot of eloquence and a lot of patience over, you know, the past years and decades, honestly. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm still Sean or Alex. I realize I signed in as Alex. I just wanted to reiterate my support for the grocery tax, but also having listened to everyone here, that we could possibly address different issues on the budget. And for instance, I am not in support of the increased staffing on the police as well. So we could potentially take those budget, you know, rework it into additional housing and supportive services for everyone in the community. As the last two people pointed out, disabilities are also very important. My wife has a disability, and it is sometimes very difficult for certain things. And, but, you know, we can, you know, take these funds. We live in perhaps one of the smartest places in the world with our beautiful university here, and we have some of the greatest minds. So we can come up with some incredible solutions that, you know, have been tried elsewhere, you know, reframe them for our specific scenarios to possibly come up with extremely helpful things for our communities. So just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to address the Committee of the Whole? Seeing no one else, we're going to move on to present, to staff reports. The first item under staff reports is a report on the additional city arborist. Welcome, Vince. It's OK. It looks like a person or two needs to take a break, so. We're not going to formally recess. We're just going to wait for that presentation. All right, I think we can go ahead. I'm sure Mayor has seen this or heard about it. You need to pull the mic close to you and make sure it's on.
I'm here this evening to seek support for a funding request for a new full-time position in the Public Works Department to assist with dedicated city arborist responsibilities and to also help us out with some of the business management aspects involved in the and to also help us out with some of the business management aspects involved in managing of our landscape recycling center. I'd like to thank the commitment from the mayor and council in regards to stated goals into the stewardship of the urban forest. And these goals are based on a few key principles that are, include maintaining and improving the urban forest, enhancing community quality of life, sustainable management of the existing forest, seeking ways to increase the tree canopy, and also engaging in education and public engagement in regards to these efforts. Public Works has been involved for many years in several key initiatives to help support these stated goals. First and foremost is the Tree City USA designation that we're very proud to have held and maintained for fifty years since 1976, the year that I was actually born. And that continued commitment shows our resolve to maintain the urban forest. And that designation does rely upon significant time and effort and standards to do that every year. That includes maintaining a certain level of spending. It also involves maintenance of a citywide tree ordinance, observance of Arbor Day, and maintaining a commission, the Urbana Tree Commission. Urbana was one of the founding members in the nation for this designation when it was created. The Urbana Tree Commission, that's a formerly mayor-appointed commission. They meet quarterly. That's a formal meeting, and they serve as an advisory commission to the city arborist in regards to policy development, tree species identification, and potential disputes that may arise. Another program that we're very proud of is the Legacy Tree Program. And this program allows us to highlight and safeguard trees that are historic, unique, rare, or otherwise significant to the community, and helps us seek public awareness as to the value of those trees. There's also Cooperative Tree Planting Program where we work with individuals, neighborhoods, organizations, and partner them to assist with the planting of new trees. Asset management is a key, key factor to maintaining the urban forest within the neighborhood of fifteen thousand tree sites that we have to manage and maintain. It takes a lot of data. Tree health, maintaining that inventory, making sure that we know what's out there and what its condition is. And then I'd also like to speak to the day-to-day work of the Operations Division and the staff that take care of the systematic pruning, tree planting, tree removals, and hazard abatement, and just generally addressing resident concerns. Well, to meet these goals, over the past two decades that I've been here with the city, we've had several, several management approaches and staffing dedications. Historically, we had two supervisory positions in Public Works. We had a dedicated landscape supervisor, an arbor supervisor, and an arbor manager that served as the city arborist and the LRC manager. Around 2012, 2013, Public Works restructured. We combined the arbor and landscaper supervisor role into one position, reporting to an arbor manager, and had a separate dedicated city arborist, and those two shared LRC responsibilities, three employees. In 2019, in light of the structural budget deficit and reductions, we combined the arbor, landscape, LRC supervisor, and city arborist role into one dedicated position. And part of the business management for the LRC, about twenty percent of our sustainability and resiliency's officers' time is spent assisting with those responsibilities. Our current arbor landscape, LRC supervisor slash city arborist, has been with the city for twenty-eight years now, so it's very important for us to start discussing what the future for Public Works looks like. And we've had several conversations in regards to succession planning. And as part of those conversations, it's pretty clear and evident to us that the number of essential functions truly exceed the realistic bandwidth of one of the current supervisor position. So in an effort to kind of wrap our heads around this, I went through and pulled all the job descriptions for all the different variations of responsibilities and positions we've had over the years, and I just listed them straight down. Going through that list of essential functions and responsibilities, it's clear that if we want to continue to support these goals, that we need to maintain those essential services. So in an effort to provide a recommendation on how best to move forward, we're proposing revising the supervisor role to more accurately reflect the expectations of the other supervisors in the Operations Division. The essential functions that would maintain with the supervisor role that we're proposing are the supervisor responsible responsibilities of eleven full-time employees currently. That's four LRC employees, that's three employees dedicated to our landscaping efforts, and then three full-time arbor technicians. We appreciate the funding of the third last fiscal year. And then we do have an additional arbor landscape maintenance worker that assists our forestry team. These supervisor responsibilities can include performance evaluation, all the training that goes in with a very hazardous occupation with arborist work and chemical applications and all the needed traffic control when we're working the right-of-way, hiring, scheduling, injury reporting, documenting, and also our supervisors assist me in managing and maintaining their individual section budgets. So that's quite a bit of work, just with the basic supervisor responsibilities of the position, along with work planning and tracking, managing all of our resident requests for services and tree trimming, along with maintaining and planning all of our systematic tree work, making sure that all that work is tracked and documented for reporting purposes, and making sure that our employees have the tools and equipment that they need and that they're ready to go any given day. Procurement, making sure, like I said, we're procuring the species we need for plantings for trees and for landscape areas, reviewing those standards and specifications. Our supervisor also helps us with supplementary contracts that we rely upon to perform all the work. We have tree planting contracts. We rely on additional help for tree removals and stump grinding. We maintain a turf mowing contract for city facilities, and we also have standalone contracts for Philo Road Landscape Maintenance and the Boneyard Creek. So our supervisor currently today and will continue to assist with those procurements, bid review, contract award, and contract oversight. Our supervisor also assists us with emergency response. With the 2019 tornado was a great example of that, and as well recently with the frequencies of the storms and the durachos that come through. One bad storm can easily consume weeks of this employee's time in making sure that we get the city cleaned up and we're tracking and then establishing and replanting all those damaged trees. So looking at these responsibilities, in our opinion, that's a full-time job in and of itself. So what I'd like to dive into next are responsibilities that are currently being done that we would like to spread out into a new proposed role for a dedicated city arborist and LRC management assistance. These important roles include programming and community engagement. Our city arborist is essentially the city's public consultants for all things trees and landscapes, and they are our subject matter expert for engagement, resolution of resident concerns, and coordinating with other governmental agencies. We do a lot of work with the Urbana Park District. Part of this program, as I mentioned, is serving as the ex-official member of the Tree Commission, managing those meetings, taking those recommendations and feedback from that group, and actually helping to implement that. We develop and administer efforts related to public promotion of landscape recycling, arboriculture, and horticulture. And as I mentioned in that Tree City USA standard, we're, one of those requirements is that we're annually participating in Arbor Day celebrations and other public events. Moving down to plan and development review, we currently coordinate and manage on all capital projects that involve anything related to arbor landscaping. We like to continue to assist in development for plan reviews, both private developments and public developments, to see how trees are incorporated into those projects correctly and per ordinances. We assist and review in work that has been approved, making sure that it's done to our standards. We also review and amend the city arbor specifications manual as necessary. Technical assistance, we provide some technical assistance to other departments in regards to vegetation ordinances. We resolve a lot of issues in regards to tree ownership and jurisdictional concerns. A lot of times with fifteen thousand tree assets out there, we don't know exactly which ones are in the right-of-way and which ones may be on public property. So we work with those residents to determine whether those are our trees or their responsibility. We monitor the activities of utility companies, contractors, and private citizens in regard to the tree ordinance and making sure that work is done properly and correctly, and then also look for this position to provide technical assistance in some of our procurements. Touching on grant applications, we miss a lot of great opportunities because we simply don't have the staff time and bandwidth to follow up on these grant funding opportunities. We'd like to be able to expand on these opportunities. And we also have a very philanthropic nature here in Urbana. When we have residents coming to us, when we have residents coming to us wanting to offer trees or offer assistance.
Could you take that conversation out of the chambers? It's distracting for the meeting. Yeah, you. Could you take it out? Thanks.
No, no, that's fine. So as I was stating, on grant applications, we would love to take more, better advantage of the opportunities out there for grants that are available to explain to our tree planting program. And as I mentioned, we often receive donations and requests for people who want to be a part and contribute that we just really don't have the time, bandwidth, and capacity to undertake. Speaking in regards to the Landscape Recycling Center, there are responsibilities for that operation that involve budgeting, market analysis, pricing demands, web and public information management, permitting requirements that exist with the landfill. We have some intergovernmental agreements that need to be administration and other coordinated efforts that we feel that this position could assist us as well. For this ask, we're estimating a little over a hundred and four thousand dollars for salaries and benefits at this time. Like I said in the beginning, we appreciate the, this mayor and this council's support of this stewardship. We're very eager in maintaining these services. We're just, we think that really we could use a little extra help to do so. I'll take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions? Grace.
Thanks so much for the presentation, Vince, and stepping up for the city with us once again. Appreciate that. And I appreciate that we put the new arborist to work in working on our tree maintenance. I did just want to make a plug, I guess optional response, on fruit trees at the new fire stations, and that was something that there's been some background conversations about in the public right-of-way. We can have more conversations, but Sollo Grazia offered to help with some maintenance and distribution of excess fruit. And we had some other private arborist help with offering some trees and maintenance as well. And then we also have the SUN sustaining urban neighborhood grants that have some optional funding there, too. So I just wanted to make a plug when we're talking about trees and we're talking about city properties.
Fantastic.
I didn't know if you'd heard of that one.
Yeah, I'm familiar of all three of those, and realistically, this is exactly why I'm here today requesting the funding for this additional help, so that we can help explore and examine these initiatives when they come to us. Right now, our challenge is mainly just the time involved for us to sit down and meet with, meet with, meet with council members, meet with people who are interested in having these conversations, and then if we decide to implement them, having additional staffing to do such.
So it sounds like we would be open and possibly equipped to expand some of our tree work and have even edible or fruiting trees as part of city right-of-ways and things.
With additional staff, we'd definitely have more opportunity to give these, give these considerations, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody on the phone have a question?
I have a question. That's all right.
Sure. All right, go ahead, Mary Als.
All right. Thank you, Vince, and I apologize if you covered this. I was trying to keep, there's a little bit of a delay with the screen and the voice and so forth. And so what I was trying to figure out is, what is the current staffing if this position is filled? So this position is supposed to be the manager, the person who oversees both the Landscape Recycling Center and the city arborist. Is that correct?
We're still working on exactly the organizational structure and how this position would fit into the org chart, so to speak. The opportunity we're exploring right now is that the supervisor role would maintain in the Operations Division. We currently have six operations supervisor, because most of the eleven employees on that list are ASME employees and subject to all the contractual requirements, keeping that working group under supervision, and the Operations Division makes sense. They also assist us with snow removal efforts, sidewalk snow and that. So we're considering placing this arborist position, perhaps in our Engineering Division, so we could give trees the equal weight in regards to assets as we do sanitary sewers or streets or sidewalks and all the other infrastructure that we maintain. Working, working in the Engineering Division would allow this city arborist to work directly on plan review. Our Engineering Department reviews development plans, both internal and external. We have a land surveyor that works in the engineering, so when we have these jurisdictional issues and concern, that person could be right next door, as well as when we're talking about, like I mentioned, the issues with utility companies and contractors and other entities doing work in the right-of-way on trees. We have our right-of-way technicians in the Engineering Department. It could be a pretty strong collaborative team and could just kind of fit right into that existing model. So that's currently the structure we're looking at right now, but the main thing that I wanted to point out, if you look at historically up into 2019, we had three full-time supervisory management employees. Right now, we rely on the same level of service from one full-time employee and about twenty percent of our sustainability and resiliency officer's time.
Do you foresee the continued use of contractors to do work on the city trees?
Yes, I do in some capacity. We've added the third full-time arbor technician. We've had, we just actually today hired a landscape technician. So our arborists and our landscaped technicians work together and share some of that responsibility. We've been a little short-staffed in that regards, but I can gladly say that as of today, at least in the arbor landscape section, that section's fully staffed. So we look forward to fully utilizing our three full-time arbor technicians in that fourth position to get caught up on our systematic pruning. But based on the quantity of work out there, it's really realistic to me that we're probably going to maintain at some level those supplementary service contracts for the time being.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jaya, any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. I just have, oh, go ahead, Therese.
I just want to ask if you could send this presentation to us so we can look at it. Again, I'm sorry, unfortunately, I missed some of it.
I'd be glad to.
Okay, and also, and because I didn't see all of it. Okay, and also, and because I didn't see all of it, the arborist and arbor supervisor are one and same, or you're talking about two separate people?
So, we will be looking at taking the job description for the current landscape arbor supervisor position, revising that in alignment with the other supervisory positions in the operations division. And then we would be in the process, we're in the process now of drafting a separate job description for the dedicated city arborist position that includes responsibilities and functions of assisting with the Landscape Recycling Center.
And how many, how many people do we have in that department to work with the trees right now?
In, so from a management perspective, we have the one full-time supervisor position. We have about 20% of the time of the sustainability and resiliency officer. And that supervisor has 11 full-time employees that report directly to him now. Four of those employees are dedicated to Landscape Recycling Center. Three of those employees are dedicated to our landscaping work that we do here in-house. We have three full-time ISA certified arbor technicians who do all of our tree work. And then we have a fourth position, which is called an Arbor Landscape Maintenance Worker Position. And that role functions as support for our three full-time arbor technicians.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, just a quick question, the $104,000, that's based on this position starting when?
We're, with approval of funding, we have to put the revised job description for the supervisor through civil service. We'd have to continue and finalize a job description for the city arborist position and get that through, approved to civil service. And then we'd have to rely upon HR's schedule to post and advertise that position.
But the budget is based on a full fiscal year?
Yes.
So, we're not going to have this in July, so we're not going to spend the full amount on this position if we approve it?
Correct, correct.
Because it'll be August or September before they can even start?
Most likely.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Grace?
I'm trying to follow the budget numbers here in context, because it looks like overall the public works budget is less than last year by about like $70,000. Is that correct? I'm just trying to see where this extra salary is going with, going and what some of the other decreases are.
So, if the public works budget overall is less than last year, then I can almost guarantee that's because there was some one-time expense in last year in, or not last year, but the current year budget, right? So, you're comparing FY '25 to FY '26. So, we can look and check and tell you what that was, but that's the logical reason why their budget would decrease.
Okay, but I'm still confused where this $104,000 for salaries, if this is coming from urban forestry or landscape management or facilities maintenance or kind of which fund or where that comes in here with the numbers?
I think, I believe it was a split between LRC, the forestry budget, and perhaps one other.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Yeah, there's got to be a third place that that's being counted.
James, I have one additional question.
Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Elizabeth, is this a reoccurring position?
Correct, yes, that's how we've proposed it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Next up, Legal Division staffing.
Okay, thank you for your patience. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Legal Division's budget for the coming fiscal year and a couple of requests we have for positions within the Legal Division. Before I get into the specific requests, I wanted to just kind of go back through recent history, talk to you a little bit about our current staffing structure, and also then what legal has looked like previously. So, as you remember, I started in this position as city attorney just about a year ago, July 8th, will be my one-year anniversary. Prior to that time, the city attorney was, that role was filled by an outside counsel. And that was the case for about three years, I believe, two and a half to three years. And prior to that, however, for decades, there was an in-house city attorney here along with multiple assistant city attorneys, anywhere from two to three, I believe, looking back through historical documents. So, the division was also supported by administrative assistants and paralegals as well historically. So, when I started in July of last year, the personnel in the Legal Division consisted of one paralegal and one administrative assistant, both one FTE, full-time employees, as well as we had one part-time administrative assistant working as a temporary employee. So, over the course of the last year, as I've sort of gotten my footing, gotten used to the organization and policies and procedures and what this role entails, what legal's role in the organization consists of, how we function together with other departments as well as outside stakeholders and interests. I've also been looking at what this division needs to be for the organization in the future and long-term and what the demands on our staff look like presently. And so, in assessing that over this past year, it's been, it's been evident that we need some additional assistance, particularly in the form of administrative assistant help. And so, we're proposing a .5 FTE, administrative assistant position to be added for fiscal year 26, as well as a .25 law clerk position, which would be a new position that has not existed in the Legal Division, at least in recent history. Presently, we have four full-time positions funded. With the additional positions, we would be at 4.75 for fiscal year 2026. So, getting into the positions a little bit, I want to talk about first the law clerk position. So, what this would look like would be a law student, current law student, working primarily hybrid or remote schedule, performing legal research and assistance on larger long-term projects that we have and that we are intending to undertake in the Legal Division. And the timeframe for this would likely be late summer, early fall to correspond with the beginning of the academic year, and then continue throughout the school year and hopefully into the summer as well. We have a number of things in queue that we've had difficulty getting to, things like updating city code provisions that are outdated or need, you know, rightsizing longer, larger research projects that just simply have been difficult to get to. And those are the domain of a law clerk that can spend and devote time to those longer-term research projects and provide support to the city attorney, as well as our outside counsel who functions as an assistant city attorney at this time. We also have, we've proposed a .5 FTE administrative assistant, as I referenced. And that would be primarily to provide administrative and clerical support to me as a city attorney, as well as a paralegal who functions as the city's FOIA officer. And that position, that paralegal position is almost entirely devoted to FOIA administration, coordinating that throughout the city organization, as well as a handful of other matters that take significantly less of his time. But certainly, there's a need there for some additional administrative assistance as well. File management, document management, scheduling and calendar management on my behalf, as well as day-to-day communications, answering phones, and basic office support functions in the Legal Division, which have been needs. You'll note that I referenced another administrative assistant in our department. We have one other FTE. And that position, and that staff member is almost exclusively devoted to managing the caseload for the city's city court program, week to week and month to month, supporting our outside counsel who does city court prosecution work, as well as other minor civil litigation support. And so, her capacity to take on additional administrative support on my behalf is very limited at this time. So, for this additional .5 FTE, what we'd be looking at is a timeframe after we hire the law clerk, probably, I would say, late fall, early winter of 2025. I apologize if I put 2026 in here, fiscal year 2026, but calendar year 2025 for both of these positions. Sorry to be confusing there. And so, looking at these two positions, the law clerk position at .25 FTE would be about $10,765 per year. And the admin assistant position at a .5 would be about $41,500 annually, for a total of $52,361. And really, the takeaway here is, we believe these positions and these additions to our department will enhance our ability to provide great customer service, both within the city organization and to outside stakeholders, enhance productivity on my behalf, as well as our paralegal, reducing administrative overhead tasks that I self-perform now and allow me, freeing me up to provide more direct, more and more of my time directly to city attorney work. And then finally, just general responsiveness to legal services requests within the organization, as well as management of litigation and other outside matters. And so, with that, I will take questions.
Any questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Matt. And could you clarify, are all of the Legal Division positions currently filled?
So, the assistant city attorney, which is fully funded, is filled in the form of a contract with our outside counsel, who previously was a city attorney, Dave Westner, has continued to perform what I would refer to in a de facto assistant city attorney role. He's providing legal services to us.
Well, that's interesting.
Under contract at the present time. And then the paralegal and administrative assistant are filled with in-house positions.
And you said the administrative assistant is kind of taken up with other roles. What about the assistant city attorney if we had that actually funded as a one full-time in-house? Because it seems like it's currently not really filled as funded, right? You're not really getting one full-time assistant city attorney at this point with the contracted services, right?
I think we're getting equivalent services based upon the scope of work that we've agreed Much of the same work that the assistant city attorney was performing previously, aside from the city attorney work, plus some additional things he's managing, litigation he's managing for us, as well as all the city court prosecution, all of our tax objection matters, and several cases currently pending that are litigation-related. And then other things that we ask to do under the scope of the contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the phone?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jaya.
I was just going to say, I don't at this time, but Matt, I may follow up with you later. The connection's a little fuzzy, so I appreciate having you slide, but I think I'm good, but I'm going to review things when it's a little bit clearer, hopefully in the recording.
All right, thank you, Jaya. Mary Alice?
Yeah, so I was wondering, is the FOIA person in the Legal Division, or is that strictly out of the executive branch?
The position is in the Legal Division's budget, which is a portion of the overall executive department budget.
Okay, and Michelle's position?
Michelle's position is in the HR budget.
Okay, so this is purely for legal things, not related to HR or FOIA?
Yes, I would qualify the statement about FOIA by saying I would expect there will be some administrative assistant work that relates to FOIA support.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
If I could just follow up on that line of Mary Alice's questions with, we're talking about the FOIA person, we're talking about Ross, right? Is he one of these four? You're saying he's not?
Ross is the paralegal, yes.
He is the paralegal there, okay. Thank you.
Any more? Therese?
Since Grace brought it up, okay, so, but Ross is our FOIA officer. So, most of his time is spent doing FOIAs.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to ask, you want an additional part-time administrative assistant, right?
That's right.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you put the salary back up for that position?
Oops.
Thanks. Okay. And the law clerk, you plan on them being like more of an intern type of thing? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just to be clear, that's not just salary, that's salary plus benefits for the admin assistant. There would be no benefits for the law clerk, but there would be for the half-time admin.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, does that, quick question, does that mean the law clerk is a contract, independent contractor, or is there?
No, we just, we just don't provide benefits such as health insurance for a quarter-time employee. So, the only, the only amount above the hourly rate of pay would be FICA.
Okay, thank you. Any more? All right, thank you, Matt. If you want to go ahead and transition into the update on the OSF departure.
That's right, I'm having to pull my second computer out for this presentation. Sorry, I have this in a document here on my laptop. So, last week, as you recall, there was public comment about OSF's recent announcement of their consolidation of medical facilities between their Champaign and Danville locations, significant changes to how they would function here in our community. And so, following council discussion around that and the request that we follow up and make the city's position known regarding that decision by OSF, I did some research last week, made some phone calls, and was able to determine a couple of things. First, this process, the actions they wish to take require them to file an application for a permit with the Illinois Health Facilities and Services Review Board. And as of late this afternoon, they've yet to do that. So, that's not, they've not taken official steps toward this announced action yet. We expect that they will do so in the coming weeks, and I'll explain why that is here in a moment. I was able to speak with the general counsel for the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, who talked me through the process there and what to expect. And so, the first thing happens, once, and... And so, the first thing happens, once an application is filed, like I said, we expect that the OSF will file an application to move forward with this. The board accepts the application, reviews it for completeness and sufficiency to move forward. So there's an initial review period, I believe they said about five days, five to seven days, where the board reviews it, and then, once it's officially and formally accepted, the board will issue a notice of review and an opportunity for public hearing. That notice would get published, and within 10 days of that notice, anyone, anyone can request a public hearing. And typically, with actions like what's being proposed, those public hearings are requested and they take place. And so, we would expect that to occur in this case. That could be the city that requests it, it could be a private resident. The public hearings are in-person, they happen in the community where the action is proposed. They take place in a public forum that can accommodate the expected turnout. They essentially have a public hearing, much like what we had tonight on budget. They hear from the public, either in writing or via live comment. Those are recorded and transcribed, and they become part of the official record of proceeding for the Health Facilities and Services Review Board, then when they consider the permit application finally. The window of time for that permit application review, unlike some of the information we received last week, is likely to be 120 days, and not within a week. And so, it'll be a longer process. The board will review all of the evidence and all of the data related to this, and then make a final decision. And so, what we're going to do moving forward is continue to monitor the Health Facilities and Services Review Board website for the filings that have occurred recently, until we see this one. We'll track its status, and we'll update council as we go along, as to actions that the city can take, and taking a formal position and going on record related to the proposed Like I said, typically, these are 120-day windows of time. There's one limiting factor here, and that is the fact that the Health Facilities and Services Review Board does not meet after their November 8th meeting of this year. And so, in order to have a review occur in this calendar year, the permit application would have to be submitted before July, I think 7th or 8th is the date that they gave me. So, we would expect this to come, this to come here in the next three weeks or so, but we'll continue to monitor and update council when that actually occurs. I'll take questions.
All right, what are the questions? Therese?
Since OSF is in my ward, my question is, can I, or would it be the city, that requests a public hearing for them to answer for why they're closing? Or is there any, also, is there any, is there any action that can be taken to make them not close?
I think the, so the answer to your first question is yes and yes. So, you individually could request a public hearing, one of your constituents could, the city council, as a public body, could do that formally in a joint statement. I expect there'll probably be a number of requests for public hearing, and if the general council's experience holds true, that's likely to be the case here. I would also say, just one thing she mentioned to me, is that OSF is presently doing more or less what they're proposing to do here, consolidation of facilities in LaSalle County, Illinois, so between their Ottawa and LaSalle Peru, or LaSalle Hospital locations, they're doing the same thing, and they're going through this process. They just had a public hearing last week, and there's a lot of opposition there, and they're expected to request a deferral for up to a year, in that case, is what the general council is expecting in that matter. So, kind of a parallel process that we can look at and learn from as this happens here.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? So just to clarify, deferral means slow down the process as opposed to stop it?
My understanding is, yeah, they would, they would essentially be asking the Health Facilities and Services Review Board to allow them additional time. I don't know what all happens during that period of time, but it, it doesn't withdraw the application, as I understand it, but it extends the window of time for review. And so, they may, they may amend their plan, they may proceed as planned after a year, but it delays the window of time for that to take place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the phone?
This is Jay, again, I, I think, it seems like the audio may be getting a little bit worse, so again, appreciate the presentation, but may have to follow up at a later date.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, police staffing, hiring incentives, and additional allocations. While we are getting our next group up there, I want to ask the clerk, what was the outcome of the inquiries about continuing meetings? We're approaching the 10:30 mark, so we'll have to extend if we're going to get more done tonight after this presentation. Was there opportunity this week to continue this meeting, too, if we don't get everything done?
Yeah, I believe the evenings of Wednesday and Tuesday were best for everyone, is that correct?
We sent in our info, what's the clerk office, what did they determine?
So, I don't have it off the top of my head. I know I spoke with Elizabeth regarding this.
Okay. Let's hope we can get through most of this.
So, the mayor's unavailable anytime after tomorrow night. He will be out of town, and so, I feel like he should be here to discuss his proposed budget.
So if we run out of time tonight, we're going to recess and continue to tomorrow at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, we'll have to show.
I'll just ask them right now, because when we run out of time, I want to make sure we kind of know what we're doing.
That's fine.
Anybody have an objection to that?
I will not be able to attend if it continues tomorrow. I'm out of state with other obligations, but I do understand prioritizing the mayor's schedule, and that this will not be final action, but I would like to make my position clear in terms of the budget, if we're not going to take action on that tonight.
Okay. We'll see how we can do there, Jaya. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
All right, Chief Boone, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you all for allowing myself and Deputy Chief Smizer to present to you. This certainly is a passionate topic. I heard from our constituents, and most of them had some very valid points. I've always said, we don't want to send badges and guns to mental health crisis, for the most part. There are cases where officers are needed, you know? One of the young ladies spoke to people living in deplorable conditions, and I witnessed that myself. There is machinery as a city to address stuff like that. I agree with that. But also, there's room and a space for police. We recently sent a group of officers to Chicago to highlight what working with community looks like by way of the community engagement team, and much to their chagrin, I should say, they were surprised to learn that so many people do this model. It's not unique. It's been around a very, very long time, and this can be very effective. You know, I heard a lot of talks about vacancies. People want to come here. Myself and Chief Smizer, we interview people weekly. In fact, we're fully staffed. Our challenge is, once they're here, after about two or three years, due to some things they may read in the paper or in the media, they want to leave. In addition to that, we're not adequately staffed. If they're not adequately staffed, this generation values a work-life balance. They're not interested in overtime, and that's kind of how we've been managing it through overtime. You know, I've said before, I start from a position of prevention first. That's how I look through the lens of 21st century policing. Secondly, intervention. And lastly, lastly, enforcement. Prevention, intervention, that's a partnership, and those things can be done. You heard folks say that, police don't solve crime, that's not factual. In 1990s, through actionable partnerships with community and data, crime in this country saw the most decrease it's ever seen. And we know how that model looks. And one of the reasons why we want a substation in that particular area is based on data. My first couple of weeks here, when I heard of Walter and Solder, Soltar, I should say, I had heard about it enough, but never put my eyes on it, and my experience told me what that would look like. And when, at the time, Deputy Chief Searls took me there, it looked exactly like I imagined. High weeds, children walking the street unclothed to some degree, trash cans running over, surrounded by drug paraphernalia, and vacant eyes that seem to have lost hope by those living there. We can do both, folks. We can make our department healthy so that folks want to stay, so we don't work them like a rented mule, and we can also address the needs that are real in certain communities. Let's go with it. All right, so this is a structure of our current police department. We have the patrol branch, that's oversaw, seen rather, by the deputy chief of operations. We should have three deputy chiefs, but we understand that it costs. So we're trying to make this structure work with two deputy chiefs. Unfortunately, the senior deputy chief has to carry the bulk in overseeing criminal investigation, as well as administration. Now, the colors you see highlighted on the structure there, the pink indicates positions approved in fiscal year 25. But we hadn't been able to realize those positions yet, just to what I said earlier. We cannot retain our folks. When people leave, I try to make you all aware through email communication, so that you see what's happening in real time. The yellow represents what we're currently asking for this fiscal year. That's an additional three officers and a community engagement sergeant, just to put us at the bare minimum. Next, please. So, the cost for the three sworn patrol officers is $367,000, which is salary and benefits. The one-time startup cost is a little over $200,000. The police training institute costs $8,177 per officer. This cost is reimbursed to the general funds. Necessary equipment is simply hardware, radios, guns, body-on camera, things of that nature. Expanding the fleet will require two vehicles for three sworn, that does not include our community engagement team. We appreciate your efforts last fiscal year, you took care of that, and we now have a vehicle for that unit. Additional training after PTI, in order to stay current with 21st century policing best practices, we have to send officers to training. It's not merely going to PTI and that's the end of it. New sworn personnel officers are essential to maintaining adequate staffing levels, to ensure officer safety, reduce overtime costs, I know that's going to come up, and we will try to really make that crystal clear. Improve response times for calls for service allows the department to transition staff to other necessarily, necessary roles. And lastly, this is merely to get us to minimum staffing. Next. So, the community engagement sergeant, the annual cost is $150,000. We're basing that on, if approved, this will probably be one of our more senior sergeants with about eight years of experience, so that we can ensure that span of control is properly managed. As you know, this is a three-year pilot program, expected to continue through FYI 2028, I'm sorry. As I already noted, two police officer positions were approved for community engagement team in fiscal year 25. We still have not been able to realize those positions due to the things I previously said. And the community engagement team requires supervision, as I just stated that it's important that the model we have is consistent with best practices. Every community engagement team that I'm aware of has a corporal or a sergeant, and anywhere from one to eight officers. I think Bloomington has one sergeant and three officers, and they've had their community engagement team running for some time now. So, next.
So, the $112,500 would extend the police hiring incentives that are currently in place, so this would be a continuation of a program that we have used to bring officers onboard. As Chief Boone has noted, it has been successful in bringing them onboard. Our issues lie with retention, not so much recruiting. It does help us remain competitive in getting the new people onboard, but as we note, the challenges do remain with retention. And this is an overview of the officers we have lost since the beginning of 2024. And that includes the three at the very bottom. The one with three years of experience is actually leaving tomorrow, will be his last day. But for the briefest of moments, we are fully staffed. We have persons slotted in every position currently within the department. But however, as we've talked about in previous conversations, that includes four persons who we are currently in a background investigation process, so they're not even onboard yet, they are filling a role at the department, but they've not yet been, they're in the conditional offer phase, so they're not yet on payroll. That includes four that are currently attending the police training institute, I believe they're starting week seven of '16, and four who are currently in our field training process here at the department, so they are still being trained. So, we're currently fully staffed with 63, but that includes 12 of those who are in either a background process or some portion of training. And with that, we wanted to keep ours short, we presume there will be a few questions.
All right, Therese?
Um, could you go back to the, showing the numbers? Because I'm, nope, nope.
I'm sorry.
No, no. Where, how many people left?
The years.
Okay, because my main question is this, because I see, like, someone was here for one year. And am I wrong to assume that, I'd say, from one to seven years, they were patrol officers?
Um, no, that'd be a pretty safe assumption.
Okay.
It's, there's potential, a couple of them were newly, I'm trying to think back on the people that left. I think the ones that were sergeants were previous to 2024.
Okay, so... Okay, so.
No, one was sergeant.
One of the seven years was a sergeant?
Yeah, it might've been the nine year, but somewhere around there.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm just looking at the one, it's 15 people. That's 15 that I counted on there, I think. And so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of them were between one and seven years. And that just doesn't leave a lot of, I mean, that means that that's not a whole lot of, of experience. That's the one thing. The other thing I was looking at is that our most experienced, and I'm sure one of these is probably Chief, Chief Searls, that retired. So we have an 11-year person that resigned, a nine-year that went to another police department. And then we have a 27 and a 25 and a 20 that retired, which would be the people that would be training or experienced enough to possibly, I'm thinking, train or rabbi, some of the younger officers.
Yes and no. Typically, when people get to that age or that step in their career, myself, I'm, uh, next week will be 24 years. I'm well past the, the training phase of my career, um, other than, you know, throwing a little piece of wisdom out here or there when I can. So for most people.
We don't have captains, we don't have corporals, we don't have majors. We don't have those steps within our police force. We have patrol officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and then you jump up to chief, basically. So that's, that's why I was asking, and, and, well stating in some ways that the, the, you could be a lieutenant and you'll end up like maybe being someone's rabbi when they come back, when they come in. How many, how many, um, training officers do we have?
That's a good question. It's something we were talking about in a staff meeting today. I think currently, um, training officer, our field training officers, I believe, Lieutenant spoke and said, seven is what we're currently sitting at. And that's going to turn into an issue. And when we talk about, and when we've previously spoke about, the number of people that we can onboard at any given time. So we have found that four is really our maximum capacity, just due to simply not having enough training officers available to them. We've thought about trying five, but we're, we're concerned and worried that we wouldn't be able to provide them with a level of training that we will feel, would feel is necessary to, to get them up to the standard that we would expect out of them. So we currently have seven. We need more. We are going to send more to training to become a field training officer. It turns into an issue when you're losing those people from, you know, three to seven years on. Those are typically the people who are field training officers or who have been here long enough to really know what they're doing well enough to train new people as they come out of the academy. And so it is, our, our average tenure for our field training cadre is getting lower, which has potential to be, it's something we need to keep an eye on.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt this discussion to ask for a motion to extend in a time that we're gonna extend to.
Move to extend to 11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend the meeting till 11 o'clock and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? All right, thank you. Sharice, you can continue.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get an understanding as to, um, cause this is just two years of folks, actually, it's just one year of folks gone. So I just wanted to get an understanding as to how many positions are presently vacant, for sure.
None right.
None right now, but we will have one tomorrow. And then two more following very shortly.
Okay, so we'll be adding two more people to this list, basically, or are they already on there?
We would definitely be adding three more people to this list for 2025.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, next, next person, Grace.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. My first question was also curious about the vacancies. What about the community engagement? Don't we have those two positions unfilled still?
Those positions are, are slotted. We have persons in those spots. We don't, we have not stood up the team based on the needs of the patrol division. And the fact that of those dozen people that we have in training, we are right on the precipice of putting people into those spots, if that makes sense.
Not quite. I think it would be helpful if we could have a little bit more of, um, something in writing, cause it's hard just auditorily to hear four in training, four in field training, these ones that need to be moved up. Also, same with a social worker, do we have the social worker position that was added from last year filled?
Yes, we did have another block on this slide that we decided to take out because of it. Otherwise, it was very small and you couldn't see the writing, so we had to expand it. But we have an overall of all of our civilian positions and that position has been filled.
And what about the deputy chiefs? Do we have an interim for the second deputy? Could you refresh our memory?
No.
So that's a vacancy, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like some more concrete information on what the vacancies in the department are.
So the, the current positions that are vacant within the department, all of those positions are being held at the patrol level. So there are people in every role. But a big sticking point has been getting a sergeant's test up and running. We've been working with human resources, that process is in, um, in progress. We hope to have that done and completed sometime in August. When that is finished, we will have a number of vacancies within the department as far as positions are concerned, but are currently filled by officers. So we will move people up into those empty ranks as they are, as the sergeant's test is really completed and filled.
So, so look at it as specialty positions, community resource off, I'm sorry, community engagement officers, deputy chiefs. We are fully staffed by our authorized strength, 63. But we don't have folks currently filling those positions as of yet because we don't have the flexibility by way of manpower to proceed further. That's a portion of it. The other portion of it is we have to set up some promotional processes that are coming. But we're authorized 63, we have a butt in each seat for 63 for now until tomorrow. And then the following weeks, we'll, we'll lose two more. But we are in the process of adding a deputy chief as well as selecting trainee sergeant, the community engagement folks.
And are you saying some of your new people in training will backfill those patrol positions?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know if.
But that's part of the 63, too. Just 63, that's all we have. There's no other folks out there, 63. We're gonna lose one tomorrow and additional two.
So I don't know if any one else at a later time, or if you can have some other way of explaining this that makes a little more sense possibly with visuals would be helpful. Thank you.
Anybody on the phone have a question?
Yeah, I do. So this is, this is Jaya. So I, I remember, I think it might've been last year with the budget conversation, there was information about surveys that were being collected related to, um, to the, the turnover, the retention issue. I guess, I, I would be curious of, do we have that information that can be shared? And I, I hear that question, concern about retention of officers. I don't feel comfortable attributing it to budget-related topics without evidence to support that. I know Chief Boone is really big on data and I'd really like to see that information that at least previously my understanding was being collected of what is contributing to people leaving our department. I know that there, there has been a big push and we've been seeing a good response to the recruitment efforts. And I know we have some fantastic officers in our police department. I think it, it is difficult, for me at least, to say what the need is when we haven't had a stable year of staffing and in order to be able to make any kind of determination about what feels appropriate. I would like more information. So I guess my, my question is, are you still collecting that survey data as people are leaving the department? And if so, can you get that information to us as we're making this decision?
So when we started to have folks leaving, one of the things I wanted to do is find out why. And we asked what some of them provide information. It wasn't mandatory. Some did provide information, some didn't. But I understand what you all are saying, but I, I would simply just remind you, we hired a professional organization to do a staffing study. And in the interest of time, page 18, 115, and 116. They made their recommendation and they provided the data as to why. So let's not move the goalposts. That's, that's been signed, sealed, and delivered.
So I'm, I'm sorry, having a little bit of a trouble hearing you. I think you're referring to the Barry Dunn study. And I do want to clarify, that is not what I asked for from that study. I asked for a, a review of alternate response models, which we still have not gotten. So I, I hear what you're saying, that there's information there. I think it's not complete information because we've yet to receive the product that we've requested. So I, I do want to clarify, I object to saying moving the goalposts. What I'm asking from you is if there is information that would help us in making this decision. I appreciate that you're asking for what you feel is needed for your department. I think that's appropriate for any department head. We have to look at the needs of the city as a whole. And I think having the data to make a complete decision is important, as you're, you're always mentioning to us. So yes, like I said, it was a little bit fuzzy for part of it. But what I'm asking is if you have that data related to staff who have left our police department as to what is contributing to that? And if you can provide that to us before the final budget vote next week.
Sure, again, um, just to calibrate it. I, I asked folks if they would provide information. Some did, some didn't. But I will ensure that you get that information unfiltered.
Thank you.
All right, Chris.
Yeah, I think it's also important that not only not move the goalposts, but not half-truth spin either. I read those page numbers and let's be clear. Barry Dunn said seven sworn police officers and six non-sworn community responders. Six non-sworn, basically the non, the alternative response. So it's not 13 police officers, it's seven with six non-sworn. So that's, that's, let's make that clear.
Grace.
I think, I'm sorry.
Oh, go, did you?
No, I, I think we're saying the same things, Mr. Evans. One caveat, Barry Dunn did not consider the community engagement folk. They were just talking about bare minimum staffing for patrol.
All right, Grace, go ahead.
Do you have an official written plan for the community engagement program?
Yes.
Could we see it?
Yes.
Why hasn't that been shared with the council or public before now? Especially when the positions have been funded for the past year?
Well, it wasn't complete. It's complete.
We need to know that before we allocate over a million dollars a year for that program. So I think that would be important for council, please.
And I understand that, but first of all, these are merely officers with a special trait. I've written an SOP and I've written a policy as to their job responsibilities, to include the sergeant's job responsibilities as well as the officers, to include a policy so that you get a better idea of what they do. And I would suggest that all of you, research other departments as to what their community engagement teams do. There's a lot of information out there.
And we would appreciate it. And so far, there has been none given to council. For the years that this program has been requested, there's been zero official information presented to council or the public about this program would do. And that is absolutely necessary. So I would appreciate if you could send that over and make that public as soon as possible.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else on the phone have a question? Before I go back to Chris.
Yeah, I actually have two questions. My first question is, is just kind of building upon what Grace and Sharice were asking. There's a bit of a domino effect, right? So the, the deputy chief and the community officers and then the field training officers and so forth and so forth. It would be really helpful to me to have it all written down in terms of the number, I think you said four people were in training, if I remember correctly. And I believe they're in training for a year before they're considered out of training. So it would be good to have kind of a timeline with what those positions are going to be and then what needs to be backfilled for me to fully understand what's going on here. And then my second question is, I know that there is a request to keep the incentives. My request is to know how many of those incentives have been used already? And what has been the success rate?
I'm gonna, so, sorry. What we don't know is how many of those officers would not have come here without the incentive. So I think it's really hard to say a success rate, but, but certainly we can tell you how many incentives we've paid since we started this and it's been a couple of years now.
Yes, that would be helpful.
All right, Chris.
But Elizabeth, I remember the November 14th, 2022 allocation for the bonuses and the retention incentives and all that. And at the time, it came to 1.3 million over three years. Have we burned through 1.3 million already?
I'd, I'd have to kind of backtrack and check that, but yes, it's, it's possible.
But you're saying it's possible to, to, to track every payment, or is that right?
Yes, yeah, it all runs, it all runs through a particular account in the general ledger. So it is possible to track it. So initially included in that large amount were the retention incentives for existing officers, right? And once all the existing officers got those retention incentives, they already had those and then everybody was coming in as a new officer and they were getting the hiring incentives. So that the, initially it was a very large amount, yeah.
All right, Grace.
Along those lines, if you're saying that it's harder to retain than hire new officers, why isn't the incentive going more towards retention than hiring?
Well, it's a conversation that we've had internally. We've done two rounds of retention bonuses. Retention bonuses are extremely expensive because it's for everyone that's currently on the department as opposed to paying one-off smaller bonuses as we bring people on one at a time. So 60 people on staff, $10,000 of retention bonuses, $600,000 versus hiring one new officer every two months at $5,000 per. It's, it's monetary.
Makes sense, but why not apply the retention just to new hires? So like when you're new hire and then after those three years, you get this retention bonus. Not everyone who's already on staff who already got those retention bonuses, but kind of like grandfathered in retention bonuses for those who missed out. So instead of saying hire. So instead of saying hiring bonus upfront, we're gonna give you this $5,000, why not delay it with retention like we did previously and say after three years of service with Urbana, you get that if retention is our issue more than hiring?
So I think we could examine that. Partly, we have a need to, we have competition here in the local area, right, that is offering incentives. And so it's hard, it's hard to know what an individual person wants when they come on board, but some people are thinking, okay, maybe I'm gonna relocate to Urbana and become a police officer. I need a little money to help with the down payment on the house. Some people might have a preference to get it earlier. Most people would probably take it now versus later if they could, but we can look at the structure of that.
Yeah, they could, but we're looking out for also the people of Urbana and if we're gonna continue to hire and have issues with retaining officers, it seems like if we're gonna spend people's tax money on that issue, it would make sense to target it towards the issue of retention rather than hiring. So just a thought, if there's any ways we could incorporate that.
I understand. We have to get them here first before we can retain them, but I understand what you're saying.
All right, any other questions? I do have one. The 112,500 for retention, what's that translate into?
It's not retention, it's hiring.
Oh, hiring, sorry. I have retention on the brain now. What does that translate into? It doesn't, it doesn't?
No, yeah.
It's not divisible by 5,000, so I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
It was based on what we, what we expected in terms of turnover, but I don't have the math in front of me, so I will have to check.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
Can I get a recap of what everybody wanted? You want policies. I couldn't quite understand the folks on the phone.
Jaya, I think they both wanted a more visual indicator of how the 63 translates into the org chart that we're talking about. What I seem to understand from that is that there are patrol officers that have not yet moved to be a sergeant or sergeants that have not yet moved to be another position, but that's not clear from the base number to what the picture looks like. And so if there was something a little more visual about where people are and where they're going, I think that would help explain that. Jaya, did you want something else or did that cover that?
So I think, sorry again, the connection's a little rough tonight. I think what I heard you were asking about is part of what I was mentioning, but also just any data that we do have available from the exit interviews to help us, yeah, help us better understand the retention challenges. That would be very helpful as well and I think it kind of relates to some of the questions that Grace brought up as well.
Okay, got it. I neglected that second part there. Chief's got it now.
Thank you.
And the community engagement information and that policy.
That's the policy.
So.
Just to add for your list and they're recorded too, if you need to go back and recap the discussion.
Job descriptions, sergeants, community engagement, and a policy as to what the community engagement team will be doing. No?
I don't think that encompassed everything, but I think we've said it quite a few times and it's back in the meeting to re-watch too, if you need to.
I want to get this right.
That's what I heard.
Okay, all right.
Since I have it here, I'll give you real quickly the math on the incentives. We expected 10, 10 new officers at 10,000 for new hires plus five 2,500 referral bonuses, which is part of the program.
Thank you, that explains it. All right, yes?
I also believe council requested, I think it was the exit interviews?
Yeah, that's the survey, yeah. Thank you.
I was just gonna add one more thing as far as like the whole thing with the positions, maybe a list of what the positions are, how many are in, something like that, instead of the org chart. The org chart can be kind of, you know, if you don't know what the stuff is in the first place, that's my, that's my only issue, just make a list saying, this is how many patrol officers we have, this is how many lieutenants we have, sergeants, unsworn people, you know, however that works.
Okay, Elizabeth?
So there is in the back of the budget book, there's a list of all the budgeted positions that goes by org code in the budget, so that might, that might give you what you're looking for, but if it doesn't, I'm sure we could produce something different.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we made it through Section E. We've got about 10 minutes. We're gonna start into new business and see how far we can get. First item of new business is Resolution Number 2025-06-039R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for the low-income home energy assistance program LIHEEP. Who is presenting on this?
Hi, yes, I am.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So this resolution would express the council's support for the LIHEEP program. In program year 2025, 2,296 Urbana households received about 1.7 million in utility assistance through LIHEEP. If council approves this, the mayor's office will send copies to the President of the United States, members of the Illinois Congressional Delegation, and other federal agencies and appropriations committees.
Any questions? Yes, Sharice?
This is, the program would go through the whole summer and we're gonna, we're going to fund, the city will fund the entire thing?
This is just a request to, for them to continue the program.
Yeah, basically, this is city, city council saying, we support this program, we want all of our legislators to know that.
Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you. I'm starting to figure out, okay.
It's showing solidarity for this. Chandra?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-06-039R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for the low-income home energy assistance program LIHEEP.
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. Any discussion, people on the phone first this time?
No, I don't have any discussion other than to say that I'm in full support of this. Ditto.
All right, Grace?
I was just gonna say the same, I support this resolution and I really appreciate the new mayor and the executive for bringing this up proactively. It's very refreshing that we can make a statement in support of something really important for our community and we don't have to fight about the right to do that locally, so thank you very much.
All right, any other comments? Don't see any. This is committee of the whole, this is a resolution, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have Resolution Number 2025-06-040R, a resolution in support of full federal funding for Head Start.
So similar to the last resolution, again, this is asking the council to express their support for the Head Start program, which serves over 500 children and families each year in Champaign County. This is another program that's administered by the Regional Planning Commission. And again, if council approves this, the mayor's office would send copies of the resolution to the president and various legislators to let them know that the Urbana City Council supports this program.
All right, any?
I make a motion for Resolution Number 2025-06-040R, a resolution in full support of full federal funding for Head Start.
Sharice?
Send on to the city council for approval.
Second.
Seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Grace, Grace beat you to it, Mayor Alice. Any further discussion on this? Yes, Grace?
Just another thank you for the support on this and proactively. Definitely personally support and experienced Head Start here in Urbana and the importance for early childhood development and education and family support, especially for low-income families. And so really appreciate this and I hope that these things aren't cut the way that they're threatened to be, so thanks for doing what we can here.
Any other comments?
Rafael?
Yes?
Is this for the regular or consent agenda? Wasn't specified.
I heard consent.
Consent?
I would re-second it if it wasn't clear the first time.
I heard Sharice say that, actually.
Consent agenda, for consent agenda and Grace can second it.
All right, you ready to vote?
Yeah, I did want to say something really quickly, James, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
So this, I'm on the Regional Planning Commission and Head Start is a program run by that commission and they actively work very hard to be able to serve the kids in that program and it's a big component of RPC and so I'm full support of asking the federal government to continue this.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We are four minutes away from our next deadline. I would, I would say that this is the point at which we should determine whether we're going to extend further or whether we're going to recess until 7 o'clock tomorrow. Mayor, what's your pleasure?
I?
I say let's recess for tomorrow.
Do I need a motion to recess till tomorrow at 7 o'clock as chair?
Yes, you need a motion, second of the vote.
Okay.
I believe so.
Just to clarify, are we talking about tomorrow at 7:00 PM?
Yes, you would need to specify that we are reconvening in council chambers, that it's for tomorrow at 7:00 PM and we're picking up exactly where we left off.
I can try. Okay, I move that we recess this meeting for now and reconvene in council chambers here tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second with the?
I'll second.
Chandra, you were seconding?
Yes. With the addition of picking up where we left off.
Yep. All right, we have a motion to second, any discussion before we vote?
I'd just like to make a comment again, since I will not be able to attend.
Yeah, go ahead, Jaya. Yeah, go ahead, Jaya. Go ahead, Jaya, this is your chance.
Yeah, just, yep, just to say, since I will not be able to attend tomorrow, I might try to draft something and send it in or something. I think the budget conversation is really important and I regret not being able to be part of a further discussion on that item. I think having the presentations was really helpful. My concerns about any expansion of the police department without actually doing an alternate response process that we've been promising our community for over four years remain the same as last year. I do support making sure that we are being competitive in terms of any recruitment or retention bonuses that we need to consider. And I also want us to be really mindful about if we are continuing the grocery tax, that it is to make sure that we have the funds available to support the most vulnerable members of our community and not to fund additional police positions. So that's my quick nutshell version. I know we're almost out of time, I'll try to provide additional feedback if I'm able to do so, but can't be there.
Thank you, Jaya. All right, I'm gonna call a vote before we run out of time. All those in favor of the motion to recess and reconvene tomorrow at 7:00 PM to continue where we left off, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. We are in recess.